Go ahead and please stand, we'll do the pledge of allegiance if your man's standing is a small favor. So, Mike, would you like to lead us in?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we please pray? Dear Heavenly Father, please shine your grace upon us. Help us to make good and wise decisions. Help to keep our meeting peaceful and cordial. And please protect us as we all travel home. In your name we pray, amen. Well, I'd like to welcome everybody to Wells County Council Meeting, July fifth, two thousand sixteen. I guess the first thing we have on the agenda here is the minutes. Did everybody have a chance to review and look over the minutes? Are there any questions or concerns, or do we have a motion to accept the minutes?
A move to accept the minutes?
We have a motion, we have a second? You have a second? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay, we have transfers. We have a little change here tonight on the transfers. The first one is general fund, sheriff, emergency plan, right to know fund. We also originally had in the additional appropriations for community corrections. And I had a chance to spoke, or speak to Blake, and there was some monies that were in the vehicle and the equipment fund that we decided we could do a transfer instead of additional appropriation to try to getting, getting by. Now, if he does have problems with the vehicle of some sort, or a major repair or something of that sort from now till, you know, the first of the year, we, we may have to come, he may have to come in for an additional to cover that. Hopefully this can, can suffice instead of an additional appropriation, so. Um, the first one. Okay, the first one here is from Sheriff's Department for Deputy Three shift, twenty thousand dollars over to overtime. I guess there was some, what, we had transferred that from third shift to overtime. Not really advising that we would hire a deputy so quick and with them all we had in the training, we're gonna put him to work right away. So, we need to have money back in third shift. Okay, so was this, had something to do with deployment, or just to implement this new individual?
Just to put the, the money back in third shift.
Okay, I got you. Okay, and then the other one is emergency plan, right to know, which is field equipment, seven hundred seventy-five dollars, or to training for seven hundred seventy-five dollars. Any questions or any concerns on the transfer?
I approve that we approved the transfers.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Pose a sign. Well, I'm sorry, we did, the community corrections, I apologize, I didn't put the community corrections in there.
Oh, that's right.
Let's just go ahead and do another motion with that for transfers. Do we have a motion, again, the community corrections, was there any questions concerning that transfer, so additional appropriation? If not, do we have a motion to accept the community corrections as a transfer? Uh, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All right. Thanks Blake for throwing that on us. I kinda confused everybody.
Quick question, Mike pointed out to me, have you guys been getting our monthly reports that we're emailing out?
I got money today.
I did too.
Yeah.
Okay, some aren't, some are not.
It was in the afternoon, I think maybe noon or somewhere.
I haven't, I haven't looked at my emails since afternoon, I took a few hours off.
I will work with IT on that because I was under the assumption that was getting it to everybody, and apparently some are, it's hit and miss. So, we will take steps immediately and make sure everyone's getting that because we also send those to commissioners as well. So, I apologize for not realizing that wasn't happening for y'all, and I promised you we'd do that, so I'll make sure we get it done one way or another. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the next thing we have here is additional appropriations. Adam, if you'd like to step up, Molly, if you'd like to step up. Kind of, last month, we went over some things, and I believe the agreements were being looked at at that time.
Yes.
So, I feel like kind of further brings us up to speed.
The agreements have been looked over by the county and city attorneys. Uh, they were agreed upon, and at the last commissioners' meeting, we were given permission to sign those agreements to move forward with the radio system upgrades for both the nine-one-one center and the Wells County Sheriff's Department. So, that's where we are, and now we're kind of the appropriations.
Okay. Any questions or concerns, council members?
Is this the same figure that you gave us last?
Should be three, I can't remember.
Three sixty-three?
Three sixty-three eight, something like that.
Yeah, three sixty-three, six five seven.
Yeah, that, that is the same number.
Okay.
And then from the, or from Sheriff's Department, that's the same, I believe, too.
Ours was?
Fifty thousand?
Yeah, the fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand. That's the money we had held off last year to save for this and sent back.
Yeah, as we discussed, okay.
I give you guys copies of that. That's showing that under available.
So, we're showing additional appropriations for Lloyd Public Safety Sheriff to equipment fifty thousand, and statewide nine-one-one to equipment of three hundred sixty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
That is correct.
Additional appropriations. Any other questions or concerns? If not, do we have a motion to accept the additional appropriations?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a motion?
I'll second it.
We have a second? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Pose a sign.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Want me to step up here, you got?
Yeah, that's all, yeah, you're nice, yeah, you're good.
Have a good lunch.
Good, thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
We have eighty-seven inmates, four are DOC, and eleven are F-six DOC, which are sentenced to DOC, but they have to stay at the county jail, but the state does pay for them. Our chiller is operational. We're waiting on, I've got one bid to consider replacing the chiller. We're waiting on another bid. Once we do that, we'll update everybody and do some more discussion on that.
Any other questions for Molly?
Thank you.
Thanks, Molly.
Have a good evening. Moving right along here, I guess we're just gonna, yeah, back to some other business here, miscellaneous business. It shows here the annual cert tax, wheel tax certification.
Yes, annually, we get the letter from Motor, Bureau of Motor Vehicles requesting that we sign the certification, you know, if we're gonna be doing any changes. And, you know, we have to put down what our changes are, you know, what we're anticipating on that. So, it's an annual certificate that we always have to do. So, I have that ready to sign. I have it marked currently that our county does not currently, our, our county does currently impose a wheel tax and cert tax that there has been no changes to our ordinance in the past twelve months. So, we have not made any changes to it. So, and I haven't heard any talk that we was going to be changing anything yet this year, so.
No, but I think it would be a good opportunity to make a little discussion among the group.
Okay.
The new law where we can do some matching. I'm trying to think now, there was talk at one time in there that we was to be maxed out on, on that.
Yeah, the max is raised, isn't it, it's higher, that's why, and now city municipalities within your county can also create their own wheel tax, right? Because I know the city of Fort Wayne's situation.
City of Bluffton can't do it because they're under the threshold of the population, yeah.
So, here, as far as our county goes, it would be strictly all county, our county decision.
Yeah.
I, I mean, my personal feelings are, I think we're fine at this stage. I don't know, you know, again, that's just my first thoughts on it. To raise it, there'd have to be, for me, a reason. You know, a specific reason why we're, we're doing that. I don't know, any of the council members?
I would have to, I see no reason to, but it's a nice tool to have in your toolbox.
I mean, we're pretty much in the middle, we're in the middle of the range, if I'm not mistaken, right? I mean, as far as?
Yeah, we're not maxed out, no?
No, we're at sixty percent.
I mean, if that day ever came, we have that option, but I mean, as far as?
And then, like Jim said, the increased amount would, could use as match, you know, for that.
Which right now, we're looking to use the additional distribution that we got this year to try to match, and you'd just be matching more if you could.
Mm-hmm, we could always use that as a max.
I think the one thing to keep in mind is the, the age of the bridges, and the fact that you could have two bridges washed out at the same time, or deteriorate to the point that it would really be hard for our county to cover that. You know, you've got CETA that should be covered for one bridge. So, we're using just about all of the other, and still not paving extra, you know, converting new roads, converting them over travel roads to paving roads. So, something to think about for in the future would be whether to do this.
And always keep in mind, I'm sorry, Ed, if you do, we want to do it before July the first. You know, so to come, to go into effect. So, we're kind of behind to do any changes for this year to go into effect, you know, now, but?
If, if we did want to make a change, how long would it take us to implement that prior to the July first?
Well, we would need to start it probably February, March, get in the process, because we would have to have a, I, I'd have to go through all the statute of what you have to do, but there are some steps that you have to do, so we'd need to get the,
Get the ball rolling.
Get the ball rolling and have it, you know, done, the ordinance done and signed by July first, so we can send that down and have it go into effect. Actually, it would go into effect on October first, if we had it done by July first. But they're changing a bunch of dates, so now next year, that could change again.
Yeah, the deadlines are changing.
Yeah, deadlines are changing, a lot of stuff, but, but we're almost too late this year to make any changes because time we get it done.
I just wanted to be brought up so that we all have in mind what to do. If this would ever come up, then you need to go, there's a way to raise some monies for taking care of extra roads or small structure bridges, that would take care of those and, and free up some money from the highway.
I'm curious with that, I know you may not have the answer, but when, if you do initiate an increase in that tax, it probably takes about a year, because everybody has to pay, you know, for the monies to be there, to go through the BMV to be received. It'd about be a year to get?
Well, we get it month, we get it month, like, yeah, we get, we get.
I'm just curious of how fast I've been, you know, how fast it would even react.
So, January, anybody that pays in January, we're gonna get in February, and this morning.
They would see it on their, on their, as they renew their licenses.
Yeah, yeah, we get them, we get them as they come in and stuff. But, yeah, but, you know, it says even on this that, uh, let's see, a county or municipality imposes cert tax, wheel tax by June the thirtieth deadline, in order for it to take effect on January. So, I mean, we could do it at any time to, to do it, to make any changes. Right now, it wouldn't go into effect till January one, twenty eighteen, because we're already past that June thirtieth.
Well, I know when the wheel tax was sold to us a long time ago, that was strictly to pave roads, and that's what we was doing with the wheel tax. And we haven't done anything since two thousand eight as far as doing any roads. I think we need to try to get something going in that direction, if possible.
As I say, I, I keep thinking, you know, now that we have a county engineer, we, we need somebody to make the plan put together to move forward, as we've discussed in other meetings. So, to me, until the plan can be brought forward and say, here's what we want to do.
Actually, he just mentioned that this morning, that he's got the traffic plan.
I'm under the impression that they are on that.
He's got, he's got, he just completed the traffic plan, which I haven't seen it yet.
They are doing something on that.
Yeah, he did the bridge plan.
Because that's, that's the only way they sold it to us way back when, the wheel tax. And every year it come up, we voted against it, except when they finally said they'd use the, you know, pave roads in Wells County.
How long ago was that?
Oh, geez, wheel tax.
Was it in two thousand nine or ten? Yeah, I think we did it in nine.
Yeah. We revised it then, I think it went back further. Whenever the state took away all that lucrative money that we were getting, you know, that we was using on the wheel tax for the, to pave roads. We were up to fifteen, sixteen miles a year, so. It was just the cost now is so great that you can't do much. And you know, it shouldn't really come down with price of oil. But it's still labor involved and all that, so.
Well, do we need, we need to go to make a motion at this stage?
Don't argue to sign this, because you signed as president.
Yeah, I was gonna say, do we, at this stage, I'm kind of getting the feeling that the, the tax as we are at this stage, I'm getting that feeling, so. Do we have a motion?
We can't change it.
Well, we could, they just wouldn't take it back till, but they made, yeah, till next year. But for this one, they're needing that if we have made a change to go into effect for twenty seventeen, and since we haven't made a change to go into effect twenty seventeen, or are not anticipating making a change.
So, do we have a motion to maintain the wheel tax as is?
I'll make a motion to not change the annual cert tax, wheel tax for this year.
Do we have a second? You have a second? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Pose a sign.
That's good to discuss it.
Next thing we have here is board appointment application. I think everybody, Beth had emailed over some different things, and Stephanie Davis had sent some things, and coming up with an idea for applications for this, all that you've got for them.
Yeah, with the commissioners, I went ahead and approved for that board to do an application process for any time they had a board opening. So, we would advertise it in the newspaper, and we would put it on the website, and give the applicants the opportunity to complete an application. And then the board would go through the applications and decide on, you know, who they want for that. Or if nobody applies, then, you know, if the person's willing to stay on, you know, whatever. But I guess even the person that's on should apply, you know, with the application. I've made some changes since I sent the last one out, because we had a little box at the top that said for office use only. I kind of changed that, and where it said board, commissioner's appointment, where they can put a check, or county council appointment, where they can put a check, and the board applying for, where they can fill out it is. Because at the current point, we, we're gonna have two appointments. Right now, we have a, an opening for the Community Correction Advisory Board, which is a commissioner's appointment. And we also have a library board, which we have one for the county council and one for the commissioners. So, that gives the applicant the opportunity to, you know, determine if they want to represent one or the other board, and particular which board they're app, are applying for. So, we, I want them to, you know, if they, they're looking at doing the library board, and we get mixing with Community Corrections or vice versa. So, that, that way, at least they have the opportunity to say which board they're applying for. They might not be interested in all the boards, but maybe just a particular board that we're looking for applicants for. So, I guess at this point, I'm just asking if the council wants to kind of adopt the same process and, and do it the same way that the Community Corrections says I, I, or commissioners have. I put it on the commissioners' page, so if the council's ready to, to do something, I'll also add the application to your page also on the website, so it's, it's there for downloading, if somebody wants to download. And then when we advertise it, we, we let the people know how to, you know, to complete it and give it back to the auditor, so then I can get it out to you all, you know, prior to the meeting, so you have a chance to review it or get ahold of the applicant with questions or anything.
And that's just for the, for the, for the library board, or is it for all boards?
This would just be for all boards.
All, all boards, okay, so it's in general, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's just kind of generic, so it'd be for, for any board that you guys have appointments for.
What will the timing be for public notice of a board position that's open?
Usually I, you know, because sometimes they don't give me the information till the last minute, you know, if, if something's open again, or if somebody has left and they need to fill one. So, and I think usually the applicant that's on there, or the appointee that's on there right now, will continue until somebody replaces them, you know. So, if they let me know, like the library, I have myself a note to put the advertisement, give the advertisement to the newsman or tomorrow, but I was just waiting to see what direction you guys wanted to go, and I would put it for both, both boards, for them to apply. So, and then I have a deadline like a week prior to the meeting for when you guys would want to appoint it. So, that gives you time to look at it, you know, prior to the meeting.
Then you would see the application.
Yes, absolutely, yeah, so you have it, I had, I'd email it out to everybody.
Right.
So, you have it prior, and then you can discuss it in the open meeting, and ask questions to any of the applicants, so hopefully they would come to the meeting to be available. Or you could contact them individually to ask them questions.
I, I personally appreciate the application process, but the other thing I picked up on just last couple of weeks talking with Stephanie is, in, in, in her regard to the library board, you know, there's certain segments of the community that, that specialize in certain things that they need on that board. So, you know, her input in that is important, too.
And she sent that email, and I responded to her, too, that I, to, to let me know what she's kind of looking for, so I can make sure that I forward that information to the boards also, so you could look. Because, you know, they like to have representation from all areas, from the Southern Wells, Bluffton, and Norwell. So, they don't want all their board members being from the north, or all their board members being from the south, so at least they have from three different school systems. And if they're, you know, like to have somebody with building knowledge, you know, or architectural or something, or financial background or something. So, there is some things that, you know, she can give an input, like if she's losing someone that's a, a big financial support, you know, or help with their board, then you guys could kind of look at that, too, and keep that in mind for the other applicant. So, so you will probably get that kind of information, too. And I think that is with a lot, and sometimes even with the health board. Now, I know the health board by statute has to be bipartisan. So, that one particularly would come down to, you know, either you, you need a Democrat representative or you need a Republican representative. So, because that one is, you do have to have so many of each party on that board. So, there is some boards that do have some qualifications that you have to meet to be able to be on that board. And we would advertise it that way, too, you know, if there is a certain qualification that you have to have to be on the board.
So, as far as our representative, Glenn Ryan is gonna be, it's coming up August fifteenth. In the past, he was interested in going further with this, so.
Right.
So, would be looking at a new?
Yeah, anyway, yeah.
Well, I'm all for it.
Yeah, I, I have no problem.
There's a lot of times over the years, you didn't even know who your representative was, and you didn't know anything about him.
And it's nice to get some background on him, absolutely.
At least my goodness, Steve, I don't represent. Absolutely.
Do we need to make a motion to?
Uh, you could, if you want to, you know, go with the application process.
Do we have a motion to?
One other thing, too, just on, we're not the only, the commissioners and the council that does appointments. We have judges that make appointments, correct? Some of the boards?
I don't know which boards.
Used to be, there was appointments by judges.
Do you have any Community Corrections?
Trying to think.
That's appointed, yeah, that's.
That's by statute. Yeah, I don't know, if they have some boards, I, I don't know of them.
I don't.
They could, but I don't, I don't know what they, they are.
It used to be that, that some of them on the? I know Community Corrections has different slots, some of them have to be.
Yeah, they have some qualifications, yes, there's some of them have to, there's have to be a health provider.
One of them has to be your prior, you know.
And a, and offender, so some of the positions do have to be, and then some of them are lay positions, and some of them, yeah. So, some of those, and that's why I said we'd have to advertise if there is a qualification that's required for the appointment.
Because it'd be good to have just one type of application for all people, is what I'm saying, so.
We just made it generic, so, you know, it, it can be used by anybody.
Okay, all righty.
Now, do we, do we have a motion to accept the application processes?
I'd like to make a motion because it gives transparency to the process that we accept the new application process that, that we advertise and so on and so forth.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
You have a second? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Pose a sign. Now, last thing we have here on business is back to the exempt and non-exempt employees. Beth had forwarded some information over, to me, it's still a little confusing, you know, it's kind of, it's this balancing act of trying to figure out what makes the most sense. I, my first thoughts were, you know, don't change it, go for the over, you know, go for the overtime economy, and then it starts to get more confusing, so. I, I think tonight, I just, I, I talked a little bit to Beth, and then I talked to Steve a little bit, because he comes from the private side, and he's seen what this fair, you know, act or Labor Act has created. Maybe we have some discussion on it, and then next month, make a decision. Because December first, Beth has to have a decision made for what we, what we decide to do with exempt or non-exempt employees. I, I'm still.
Probably help also with our coming up budget.
I know, that's why we need to kind of have it ahead of time, so we know what to exact. Well, we know specifically what wages we have to have for certain exempt.
I mean, if we make an official decision on it at our August, whatever, meeting, then we'll, then we'll know. We'll be, we'll be ahead of the game.
Yeah.
But like I said, tonight, after I, I kind of started to have an idea, and then when I talked to Beth a little longer, I started getting a little more confused on where things, I guess I'm kind of throwing it out to all council members for questions or comments on what you think. Because some of it is just a couple of dollars, it can change the threshold, you know, to the, the higher threshold. But then again, we'd have to do salary ordinance adjustments to, to meet that. And if not, then are we having questions on the overtime? And who's determining the overtime, and how much overtime is being done? You know, so you start to kind of do the balance, and that's, in my opinion, you start to try to figure out what makes the most sense.
Is comp time, is that?
That's the same as overtime. We offer comp time, but our jail, and our sheriff, and our highway have overtime. They get overtime pay, and resting employees get compensation pay. So, basically, all it is, is if you're gonna give them, it doesn't matter if it, if it's pay or if it's comp time, you know, how you're gonna classify them, so they get this or they don't get that. The issue is, you know, like, some of those that might be exempt right now, they're, they're exempt employees, so they're not earning overtime, they're not earning comp time. But if you don't raise their wage to be at that threshold, at least that threshold, then they're gonna start earning either comp time or overtime. And specifically, one employee that's in the jail, I don't know that they have budgeted enough, you know, to pay for overtime pay, because they pay overtime pay rather than comp time. You know, more, normally, they kind of go back, they do either or, it's, it's, you can do it either way. You earn it either as comp or you earn it as pay.
You know, the way I look at it, that, maybe I'm wrong, but comp time, if they work over an hour or something like that, then they get an hour off later, is that correct?
Well, it depends on if it's, if it's on forty hour week, or like, like, like my staff, my deputies are thirty-seven and a half hours, so between thirty-seven and a half is just straight time, overtime. But then anything over forty would be time and a half.
Okay, how about comp time, though?
The same thing. Well, they don't get, they don't get paid overtime, so they only earn comp time. Yeah.
But there's limits on comp time.
So, I see something right there right at the back.
Right, there's only, there's limits. Because you get up to a certain amount of comp time, or you have to be paying, you have to pay voluntarily.
I know you have to pay within a certain amount of time, too, don't you? You're used to, we didn't have to do that, but I.
Not by the Fair Labor Law. But we have it in our handbook that way.
Because we got.
It's in our hand waves, but it's not, it's not the federal law.
See, there was, a few years ago, we really got stuck big time by one person on.
I think it was more than one.
Okay, well, one was really bad, I thought.
We're having a department head meeting.
I think there should be something, you know.
We have a department head meeting next Wednesday, so I welcome any council meeting, council member to come to, to discuss, because this is what's on our agenda to talk about. Because I think that the department heads have just got to be more proactive, you know, and, and, you know, what, what is being used as comp time, what's being earned as comp time, if it's, should be earned, or if, if we need to adjust some things, or adjust some job duties, or something like that, to not have the comp time. Or if, if it's enough that we need a new employee, or whatever, you know, they need to bring that to you. But there's some offices that use a lot of comp time, there's not very many that do. You know, we don't have that much of an issue with most of the offices. And, you know, like I said, the, the jail sheriff and, you know, highway, I mean, that's, there's sometimes you just can't avoid that, you know, if you have snow. though sometimes you just can't avoid that, you know, if you have snow, or, you know, or, you know, accidents, or something like that, you know, those are just going to be that way. But they get, usually those is paid, and he has overtime in his budget, you know, to pay. But maybe not to, you know, cover some of that. And, you know, like I, you know, explained in my letter, you know, there's performance pay that gets applied too. But if the performance is paid is applied to the salary, rather than just a bonus, then it meets the threshold. So we don't have to raise the salary, we just have to adjust it and put it, you know, as a yearly on, on top of salary, instead of having a bonus of a performance bonus, then they wouldn't be eligible for a performance bonus, and just getting it throughout the year, that would, that would hit the threshold for that particular employee. And then, you know, the other couple, you know, like, you know, it's just whether they need to be exempt, or whether they don't need to be exempt. The, the EMA director were pretty sure that one's just going to go to non-exempt, because I mean, that's a tremendous pay increase, and the job doesn't require that many hours, you know, so.
Only emergency.
Yeah, and an emergency, and then, you know, they would earn, you know, comp time, if that was the, the case, you know. Or even we budgeted in our rainy day fund for emergencies for salaries, so I mean, it can even be justified that way too.
Do each department head make their decision, or are they the ones that make the decision, or the, the person to have the overtime or not?
Absolutely. Absolutely, yes.
Okay, it's not a, it's not a deputy or some, okay, I want to make sure.
Absolutely, it's a department head.
It's department head.
They're the ones that have to sign that pay voucher. Yeah, that department head has to sign that pay voucher.
That pay voucher.
Does the employee sign the pay schedule for the week?
They have to keep track of their pay, of their schedule, but any time, any overtime has to be approved by your, by your department head.
Are they extremely vague when you get these?
They just have hours.
Vouchers, okay.
Yeah, they just have hours, like they work nine hours for the day, they work six hours for the day, you know, it doesn't have like what time they come in and leave, but.
So it's based on the honesty?
Absolutely. So it's, you know, it, it really is, it's the department head's responsibility to make sure.
To check, check, yep.
Yeah, it is, it really is. So I think that's why we're, that's what we're going to be discussing at the department head meeting, so we can.
Has the county ever thought of using, uh, cause they got really modern type of clocks now to, as people come in the door, some kind of a chip, because I would think you would want to run, that's the way I ran my business, and I paid overtime to the minute, you know, I mean, and, and that was a fair way to do it.
Places like TRMC do it electronically on a computer.
Yeah, there's a lot.
It's usually a fingerprint, or a, you know, a, a computer that you sign on.
Yeah.
But you can sign all computers at home.
That's right. Somebody else could sign in for you.
Yes, absolutely, it needs to be a fingerprint or something.
You can put your finger on something, and it doesn't mean you start working either.
Yeah.
That's right.
I mean, a lot of it goes into, you know, when you talk about time, or is it trying to, is it the honesty? The honesty integrity of your employees you hire.
Yeah, it sure does. And I mean, it just spirals around, and the department heads need to be more.
Active.
Active in, you know, looking at the time and justifying it, and giving reasons why, and, you know, I, I don't know. I'm not a big fan of comp time or overtime, you know, I don't know, but it's.
Well, I think it, it should be, you know.
If it's needed, it's needed.
Try not to have, especially, you know, there's times that you just, you don't, you also have to be fair to the employee, and you have to go by the fair labor laws, you know, what the IRS says. And I think that that's how there was problems with the comp time before, is one person said something, then, you know, there gets to be an audit done, and you find out, oh, well, can you justify this? And they almost always go towards the employee as the one who was.
And they're going to, no matter what policy we have, the fair labor laws, what they're going to go by. So we can make whatever policy you have, so, yeah, yeah.
It's going to trump everything.
You know, if they work the time, they've got to be compensated for it. So if you're allowing them to work that time, then they're going to be compensated either by comp time or monetarily, you know, so. It just needs to be recorded correctly.
Well, I think we, I think, you know, I'd rather wait till August and make a decision personally, so it gives us a little more time for food for thought, and then we can make a decision next week, or next meeting. What employee, or how we're going to proceed.
Yeah, we, we got the four, you know, you got the four employees, you know. It's all public records, so, I mean, everybody's salary is public record, so. Yeah, so it's just determining on how we want to act on those four, those four employees. Everybody else is exempt all the way over the threshold, so have an issue with that.
I guess that's everything on the miscellaneous business, any other thoughts or concerns to give to the meeting? Did I get something like that?
Would you give me four for a minute?
Yeah, sure, step up.
I could take it for three or four hours.
No, I want to give you a few minutes.
I want to go back to what Jim said, and I'm not trying to build him up or put him down, but Jim's dead on, uh, the wheel tax, and I, I was part of that group, and that, that wheel tax was earmarked for making roads. I don't need one, they finally got mine done. But, uh, but Jim's right, that, that money is for that, and here's been land, and land, and land, and now we're talking about a plan, and I'm not trying to be a smug here, but it was even mentioned in here, in January, we need to get a plan together. And here it is, July, we're probably no closer to a plan. Now, I try to put nobody down, but we're probably no closer to a plan, and then we're probably no closer to even getting the road done. And after we, we've been moving for the last hundred years, you're not going to see all the roads that county chipped and sealed or paved, not, not to rate the mood, I'm not trying to make you fun of me saying you're going too slow. You and, and the people that signed the names of the money, I'm just talking about, talking about the whole county as a whole. It's, it's, it's like, why don't we wake up and, and get with it? Now, the, the plan, I, I'm not an educated man, I've got common sense. I'd like to apply something to that plan, and, and I'm saying it's not to new people, I mean, in a way, but who is the people? And, and I, what I've seen over my forty-some years living on the, in the same spot, is waste upon everything else. And Jim mentioned about, well, the price of oil goes up. Well, i- if, if they had done this years ago, when, when Roy Staley asked to be chipped and sealed, it would already, we've been done. That was nineteen thirty-six, by the way. And, 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 but if we just keep talking about it, it'll be two thousand sixty-six, or whatever have you. And think about this for a second, let's just pretend tomorrow they're all chipped and sealed. Just pretending, what's going to happen? We're going to get rid of a lot of waste, cause we have, we have tractors running up and down our roads. They're scraping, they're putting gravel down, they're scraping it, scraping it off the side dicks into my yard, whatever have you, for forty-some years. And the mindset is the same thing over and over and over. If it's all done, look what all this stuff will go bye-bye. Now, you guys are in charge of the money, let's get rid of the waste. Let, let's get rid of, I don't want to talk about somebody in particular, but if there was no tractors, and no gravel being thrown out in the road and scraped around for the last forty-some years of my life out here, forty-five years, look how much money we would have not thrown away. And, and we don't have a mindset to get it done. You can just go on and on, I'm not saying we can do it overnight, but where's the plan, and let's get started. And I say, let's go in depth of what takes and do the county. I'm seventy-seven years old, I'm not going to live long enough. You know, I really don't care anyway, but, but as a citizen, and as grandchildren, or have you, let's, let's make the money work, and let's get rid of, let's wait. There's part of the waste right there, then I can tell you, personal waste, I see every day and every day. I've lived in the same spot now, like I say, forty-some years, and I've been retired for over twenty-five years, so I see a lot of things happening, that's just waste, 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 waste. You're over the money, I know you're not over the control of, of, of that, but that's just one, one thing that I see daily, waste, 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 waste. But what, how much money would we have? I've asked some people in this room, I've asked some people throughout the government in, in our county, I don't want to mention the different titles, and, and, see, cause for instance, let's just take the sheriff's car. All, all scratched up, all beat up, tires were wore out, the brakes, the dirt, the filth, and, and the, and the brake shoes, and, and the oil changes, the filters, whatnot, all of that go bye-bye all over the whole county. How many dollars we talking about? I mean, it, one little mile of time, I understand, but it, it never shows up. It's never showed up by forty-some years, but what if it's all gone? What if it's all gone? You would, you would have, and that's just, that's just one thing, the buses. How much wear and tear on the buses would go bye-bye? The oil, the filters, and, and the brakes, and the tires, you say, well, Jack, that's kind of petty. No, it all adds up, people, it all adds up, it's called waste. I, I suggest we do these roads years ago into this group, and I'm sorry, I don't want to go, Mr. Cole, I'm deceased, I don't mean it that way. And when I, when I approached the, the group, uh, the, the oil, the oil was fifty-three cents, the special oil they use for the chipped and sealed, it had a special number. And at that time, it was like seventy-some, now it's a dollar and twenty or thirty cents. It, it's going to be sixty, eight, ten, fifteen, twenty dollars, so we're not doing that, we're, we're not moving forward. And, and so if you draw a line and do it, you can get rid of a lot of, of, of waste that just goes on and on, that I've seen in forty-some years. Millions of tons of gravel just thrown out my road and shoved over my dicks, that I go out with a vacuum cleaner and suck it out my dick, so I can mow my yard. And that's just one little.
And you wouldn't have anything to do, Jack, if they did that.
That's right. And ladies and gentlemen, when I talk, I'm also a kind of guy, I get disgusted mad, and I get loud now, I don't mean to be that way. I don't, I don't mean to be that way, I just, the way I come across, I come across as a, through the language of the bus on your face. And, and, but, but I, I just hate to see the, the stupid waste. And, and just, well, there's been five tractors on my road in forty-some years. Wore out five tractors, and they're doing the same thing, just throwing gravel out and scraping it around. Now, they don't do anymore, you know what they do now? They drive from mile to mile to mile to mile to mile to find a gravel road. You and I are paying for that waste of gas. They just drive around to find a gravel road here and scrape it, just like, for instance, my road eleven hundred. You go all the way across this chipped and sealed, you get the last mile in the county, and there's gravel. So the driver has to drive down a chipped and sealed road to get that one mile.
You get to it.
Waste. You've got to get a big program board and get rid of the waste. Thank you.
Um, Jack, I just, uh, we did have that discussion earlier in this year, and so, uh, I was in a meeting with Blake Gerber, and he said that they are working on a plan, they've been discussing things and have meetings on it. So just to let you know, they are working on it somewhat, and I wasn't in that meeting, but maybe I'll check in.
Could I, could I introduce something to the people there? And again, again, it's not your responsibility, but let's just say, what would you charge to come out and do this mile? And what would you charge to go over and do that one? We, we're going to charge to do that mile. Now, the company's going to do that, or we're going to do that, if we start there and do every continuous mile, just pick a corner, you've got four corners of the county, pick a corner and just start. All the equipment's there, the manpower's going back to the same place, and there's not waste to run up and down the road. Just start, and given there, flip the coin, and just start and go. There, there's part of your waste go bye-bye. You're not going to have that transportation of that operation just over and over, one here, one here. Now, I'm saying the people signed up for it, I understand, do those people, you know, I say, you know, do those people. But if, if we had a plan, but, but my plan would be, you just start, I don't care where, first point for me, you know, just start and just go for the whole program.
Well, hopefully Nate, you know, now that we have a county engineer, at least we got, we're going in the right direction, so, you know, we're going in the right direction.
I think we've got a good man.
Hopefully we'll see some, some progress there, so.
Thanks for your time, Coach Jack.
Well, any other, any other concerns or thoughts?
Sorry, one more. Um, we have not set the adoption date yet for our public hearing, and I actually need that tonight if we can, because I meet with the LGF on the second, which is the day before we meet again.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, yeah, so I kind of, they, they like to have that date.
What was our, what was our?
Well, we're having our public hearing on, um, this, on September the sixth, which is a regular, regular meeting day. Uh-huh, so we'll have our public hearing day, um, so, um, we just need to set the adoption date, in which I mentioned the October meeting day is the week of my auditor's conference.
Yeah, you're going to be at hospital.
Yeah, so if, if that's the week you want to do it, that's fine, I'll just come back home, you know, so, I mean.
We can, so we need to set some, we can't, we can't do that at the September sixth.
We just have to have it ten days apart.
Yeah.
Have to be at least ten days apart, so if we're having our public hearing on September second, sixth, we can't come in.
So could we come in, and I guess could we set something up to come in in the evening?
Absolutely.
And just set that up, and we, we wait, it could be a five-minute deal, or?
We used to get the newspaper, didn't they, used to? On our adoption date, wasn't, uh?
Are you talking about the lunches, the paper papers?
There we go, that was before my time too.
Actually, it was John McKee, that was a councilperson from Osien, and he was a security guard for the, the person that owns most of the Pizza Hut's in northeastern Indiana, and he had a golden card to get pizzas, had no charge. And then when he left the board, Jim Barbary picked it up. He, he enjoyed the fact of us just sitting around and talking about things, and, and he, no decisions were made, he just enjoyed that.
Weird, Jim, I was trying to make him feel bad. You're laying him out here all.
I think we brought this up to every reporter since Jim.
Public hearing, so you have to have it.
Ten days has to be.
After that, so, um, yeah, so.
So like the.
Either this week or that week, or the middle part of October too.
Nineteenth or twentieth, well, is that street fair, is that street fair?
Yes, this is street fair.
We used to meet during street fair.
Yeah, this is street fair week.
Well, Monday would, Tues, when's the street fair start on?
Tuesday, yeah.
Would, what's easier for everybody, I guess I'm, I'm open to anything.
Or you could wait till, it just has to be done by November the first, so you could do it sometime else in October if you want to.
I mean, would you want to do it on a Monday before the street fair, or do you rather do it on the street fair? I mean, that'd be easier.
They're making everything about a year late, a month, a year later, a year, a month later than what we used to do it, so. September, but, you know, it could be October, I guess.
That Monday might be.
Be, be personally, street fair is an extremely busy week.
Yeah, so Monday would be, you want to just wait till the following week after?
So what day is that?
The week of the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, the twenty-sixth.
Oh, that week is the week of AIC.
Well, let's.
But in evenings, you know, I would be available anyhow, so it doesn't matter to me, I just threw the day.
What, every night, or how's that?
No, it's on three days during the day, it's on Allen County though, so it's closed.
I was going to say, make it easy on whatever night you wouldn't be there.
Or if you want to wait till October too, that's fine, just not that first week. First week is when I'm at conference, any other time.
I'd rather not let it drag out, I'd rather get it, I'd rather get it behind us, so, yeah. So you pick, what dates, you don't know what day you'll be up there?
It, um, Tuesday night would be the worst night probably, probably Monday, Wednesday, or Thursday would be best.
Let's make it Thursday, the, can we look at Thursday, what is it, the twenty-ninth?
The twenty-ninth, Thursday, the twenty-ninth of September?
I will, I will have a conflict, not on the Monday.
You don't have a conflict then too, a lot of times.
You would be.
Oh, I would not be here on that day.
But on Monday, I would.
How about Monday, the twenty-sixth?
How about Monday?
The twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth?
I could do that.
You'd do twenty-sixth?
That'd be, does that work for everybody, you think? Well, let's shoot for the twenty-sixth, and, uh, is there a time best for everybody? Cause again, chances are it may not be very long, but again, you never know, I mean.
Never, usually is.
Usually, I mean, would six o'clock be okay, or be okay for everybody, or?
I'd rather make it early, cause I'm in town, and then.
Yeah, save you from.
Whatever, but we've done them at lunchtimes for people, but would that be harder for you?
Be a little harder for me, yeah, for me. Six o'clock work for everybody?
Or is that, oh, I thought you were saying six wouldn't work, six would work for you. Yeah.
It would, okay, there.
Hey, I've always got plans to do out the office.
Not really. I could do five.
I mean, I don't care, I just, Jim said something about early, maybe five.
When do you, when do you normally head out of, out of town?
Usually about, well, it depends.
I mean, we got to make.
Five-thirty would be okay, you know, five, matter of fact, I could probably be, you know.
Yeah.
As long as I get my black book, I can be here.
Five o'clock?
Yeah.
Is that too early for everybody?
No.
Sure, you're good, let's do it five, that'd be.
September twenty-sixth, yeah.
September twenty-sixth.
So we're having the hearing on September regular meeting, and then, and then the adoption, uh, meeting will be September twenty-sixth on Monday.
Five o'clock.
Monday, five.
Okay. Well, we're going to have a good business, we have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raised, signify by raising your hand.